We on? All right, thank you everybody for coming out tonight to our May 21st Commissioners Meeting. Uh, we are streaming live on Facebook. Um, we still have technical difficulties with our tight channel. So my recommendation would be to stream it live on Facebook if, if possible. Uh, with that said, I'd like to stand for the pledge to begin our meeting. Thank you. Uh, before we take roll call tonight, we had one of our seniors pass away. He was retired guard, eighty-eight years old, and he resided on Thornton Road. Uh, I knew Mike personally. He was a great guy and um, he will, he will be missed by many. So if we could have just a moment of silence out of respect for him, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Nino.
Sure thing. Commissioner Baraco?
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Here.
Uh, Lisa Cadania? Mr. Gariosso?
Here.
Michael Pierce?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Neary?
Here.
And myself, George Nito's present.
Thank you. Um, our next item for our motive, for our vote voting items. Commissioner Neary is going to read through most of them. Uh, Commissioner Whitaker will be reading through two for our Chester Water Authority of Resolution and for the extensions for Jake's fireworks. So with that said, I would like to ask Commissioner Neary to begin making our motion.
Um, George, before we begin, are there any citizens' comments?
Yeah, so at this time, I'll just ask that if there's any citizens' comments, anybody that is on the line, you can unmute yourself by pressing star six. When you do that, please state your name and your address. And then you'll have two minutes to speak. At which time after that, we'll try to call back online. All right, uh, at this time, it doesn't appear that there are any citizens' comments for tonight.
Right. All right, we'll record the most little comments and.
Who's, who's moving around? Or who's got all this stat here? Any ideas? Cause, all right, I'll move, uh, move, uh, the approval of the minutes from an April ninth regular Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
All right, George, can you take a roll call?
Sure thing. Commissioner Baraco?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Gariosso?
Yes.
Mr. Ray Kowski? Uh, Ed, you're on mute.
Uh, yes, sorry about that.
No problem. And Commissioner Neary?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next item is a proclamation recognizing children's supplemental mental health week. Whereas mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter while celebrating the accomplishments of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas according to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas research has shown early identification and appropriate of mental health disorders among young children and adolescents provide them with opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas children in youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to timely services and supports that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate. They also benefit from the integration of behavioral health and primary care education and wealth, or child welfare. And whereas it is important that children and adolescents, along with their families and communities, learn that warning signs of mental health disorder and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. And whereas obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a child requires gathering information from diverse sources, including the family, school, and others involved with the child, now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township, must hereby declare, proclaim in May third through ninth, twenty twenty, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. So move?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
The second proclamation is recognizing the hundred and fourth birthday of Mrs. Rose Leot. Whereas the township of Upper Chi-Chesapeake takes pride in its sense of community and citizen involvement. And whereas Rose Leot was born on the sixteenth day of May in the year nineteen sixteen and is celebrating her hundredth fourth year of life. And whereas Rose Leot has been a longtime resident of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township and now resides at the St. Francis Home. And whereas Rose Leot has been involved, has been an involved member of the community of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township. And whereas the Philadelphia Phillies officially recognize Rose for her hundred and third birthday. And whereas Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township now wishes to recognize Rose for her hundred and fourth birthday, now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township do hereby wish Rose Leot a happy and healthy hundred and fourth birthday and wish her many years of joy. So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Uh, the next item is, uh, considering a resolution extending the discount and face payment periods for the Township Real Estate Tax Bill pursuant to Act fifteen. Uh, the resolution to implement the Act fifteen of twenty twenty's property tax relief provisions. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township to implement provisions of Act fifteen of twenty twenty relating to property tax relief. Whereas Act fifteen of twenty twenty permits taxing districts, including townships, that impose taxes on the assessed value of real property to provide relief to taxpayers. And whereas on April twenty-second, twenty twenty, the Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township Board of Commissioners determined that it is in the best interest of the township, its residents, and taxpayers for the township to provide relief to those paying taxes on the assessed value of real property located within the township and subsequently notify the tax collector of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township. Now therefore be it resolved that Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township hereby note, ratifies that vote on April twenty-second, twenty twenty, and extends the period in which it will collect the tax imposed on the assessed value of real estate at the township's prescribed discount rate of two percent through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Be it further resolved that up, the Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township hereby waives any fees or penalties associated with the late payment of the tax imposed on the assessed value of real estate, provided that the tax is paid in its entirety by August thirty-first, twenty twenty. Be it further resolved that the Treasurer of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township delivers a copy of this resolution to the township's tax collector adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township this twenty-first day of the month of May twenty twenty. So move?
I second.
So motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
That's Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
Commissioner Whitaker, I believe the next resolution is yours.
Okay, thank you. The Township of Upper Chi-Chesapeake County of Delaware Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the resolution of the Township of Upper, excuse me, Upper Chi-Chesapeake, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, expressing serious and immediate concerns about proposed actions regarding Chester Water Authority. Whereas on April thirteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Wolf issued a declaration of fiscal emergency for the city of Chester. And whereas a particular concern is a statement made in a concise statement of facts supporting the determination of fiscal emergency in the city of Chester, referenced in Governor Wolf's recent declaration, which states in part, "The city of Chester has two significant business-type assets, the water system owned by Chester Water Authority and the parking system owned by the city. The city is considered a potential sale of the utility assets of the authority which is consummated, could generate millions of dollars, excuse me, which if consummated, could generate millions of dollars. The city has been engaged in multiple lawsuits related to the sale of the authority. Defeat would result in the loss of a huge source of potential revenue for the city. And whereas attempts by the city of Chester to claim ownership are currently under litigation in Delaware County Orphans Court. And whereas attempts by the city of Chester to repeatedly sell or monetize assets of Chester Water Authority would constitute a grave conversion of hundreds of millions of dollars from ratepayers throughout Delaware and Chester Counties. And whereas Chester Water Authority is an independent municipal authority with its own governing board and decades of faithful service to over two hundred thousand ratepayers across Delaware and Chester Counties. Whereas Chester Water Authority has been a longtime source of clean, high-quality drinking water for the residents of the township and has protected the community from unnecessary rate hike for both its residential and business customers. And whereas the protect, the proposed sale of Chester Water Authority to a private for-profit company would have detrimental impact on the utility rates for both the township's residential and business customers. And whereas the township is considered, excuse me, is concerned that either Governor Wolf or the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development may attempt, under the guise of the fiscal emergency, to order the sale of Chester Water Authority, thereby sacrificing the independent integrity of the authority. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners of Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township, hereby urge strongest possible terms that Governor Wolf and the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development immediately and publicly commit to Chester Water Authority's continued existence as an independent municipal water authority to protect public asset to Ocatara Reservoir and to advocate for the best interest of over two hundred thousand Chester Water Authority ratepayers. Resolve this twenty-first day of May twenty twenty, Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township.
Thank you too. There's a motion. Mr. Baraco?
I second the motion.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question about the last whereas. I'm voting in favor of the resolution, but I, I, does Governor Wolf has the authority on his own to order a sale?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, that's, I know it's already passed, but if, if, I, I'm concerned that that indicates that he can when he may not be able to.
It will have to be approved by the PUC.
Okay, all right. I didn't know that he could do it unilaterally. I mean, even if it has to go to the PUC, I didn't know that he could order it to go to the PUC.
It, it's unclear at this point, Commissioner.
Okay. All right, um, resolution number ten. Uh, considering a releasing of, uh, street escrow funds to Moore Outdoor Rejuvenation Incorporated for street opening escrow in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Whereas the Township of Upper Chi-Chesapeake and Parkside Moore Outdoor Rejuvenation Incorporated had entered into an agreement which provides escrow funds for the street escrow at five-twenty Jefferson Street. And whereas the township manager has approved the request to return the entire street escrow in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five dollars and requests action by the Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township of Upper Chi-Chesapeake executes such action as required by the Board of Commissioners to release street escrow funds in the sum of two hundred and twenty-five dollars, duly adopted this twenty-first day of May two thousand, twenty twenty. So move?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries.
Okay. Consider a motion ratifying the vote taken on April sixteenth, twenty twenty, authorizing the distribution of allotments to three fire companies prior to receiving their twenty nineteen nine ninety tax return filings. So move?
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving payment request number one from Gessler Construction Company, Inc. for the Bergdol Park Basin Project in the amount of three hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. So move?
Second.
Uh, just one comment. Uh, Lisa Cadania, uh, there's a ten percent retainer still on this?
You're muted. She's muted.
All right, um.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get it to unmute. Um, we're holding thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. There are some issues that we need to resolve that are under, under punch list. Once those are resolved, we'll, we'll, uh, recommend that release.
Thank you. Motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Jake's Fireworks?
Yes.
Okay. Jake Fire, excuse me, Jake's Fireworks at nineteen nineteen Chi-Chesapeake Avenue's preliminary land development application in compliance with the Pennsylvania Municipal, Municipalities Planning Code, Section five oh, five oh eight fifty-three, ten thousand five, excuse me, ten thousand five hundred and eight. I hereby request and agree to the extension of time to review above referenced preliminary final subdivision plan application, which is set to expire on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. I understand that the review of the plan will not be subject to any legislative changes which may be pending or adopted during this extension period.
Second.
Any sort of motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Edmunds GovTech for permitting and code enforcement, permitting self-service and land management modules to be added to the township's cloud-based municipal management software. So move?
Second.
So motion in a second. Any comments? In all favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the township solicitor or representative from his firm to attend any and all of the Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township Planning Commission meetings and to provide legal advice to the commission on applications that's needed. So move?
Second, but I have a question.
Yes.
Is there going to be a rate with this?
Same rate that we recharge the township on an hourly basis.
Can you repeat that, Mr. Pierce? We couldn't hear you.
Sure, the same rate that we charge the township on an hourly basis.
So I, I spoke with Mike today about this. And he indicated to me that, you know, he's reviewing the plans and submissions now. So it's either he does it at a later date or earlier at, at the planning board. So our feeling is there's going to be no increased cost to this process and it could possibly be saving us some money. We, um, just, 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 just due to the fact that our solicitor is, is present.
So you're saying that, just to confirm, Mr. Pierce is already reviewing the information, which we discussed last week. And him attending either now, since we're all in virtual mode, um, a virtual meeting or him eventually going out to a planning board meeting in person is not going to be an additional charge? Or addition, we're not going to see, we're not going to see an increase in solicitor fees?
My belief is that we will not. I, I mean, it's kind of, my belief is that we will not see an increase. And here's what, part of the issue is, if you remember, when we go through a lot of the meetings, a lot of the discussion seems to center around what the planning commission was thinking and why they made this type of a recommendation. So in turn, we end up going back, redoubling the efforts and finding that out. If I was there to at least help them and guide them through the process, we would probably have a lot less questions and a lot less problems. It, it's the classic, I liken it to the classic fram oil crafter. You can pay me now or you can pay me later. It, it makes more sense to do it at an earlier stage so that we have all these issues and questions addressed. You know, as I said, right now, I'm reviewing them, but in so many instances, I'm trying to reinvent the wheel and try and understand what they were doing and why they were doing it, why they made those recommendations. Whereas I would have that information because I would be part of the meeting to be able to give to the commissioners either at the caucus meeting or the regular meeting right prior to the vote, rather than postponing it, going back and re, rereading the record and going through that.
Okay, so the, my, my concern is, you know, after last week's meeting, we had some people that were watching or listening in. And because of what we're going through and not knowing what the deficit is maybe for the township. So from a monetary standpoint, um, residents were concerned about adding additional monies to, you know, what we're currently, um, already doing.
I, I don't see it as, 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 I mean, like I said, you're either going to end up paying for, to go back and try and redo the record, which is twice the, twice the amount of time as opposed to dealing with it right there. I, I don't see it. I, I don't see it. I see it kind of as a wash, quite frankly. I don't see it as a huge expenditure. I'm just trying to make it streamlined so that the Board of Commissioners can act when they need to act and have the information available when the vote comes. I mean, it's pretty standard in most of the municipalities that I've represented that, that the solicitor is present at the planning board to help guide them through the process because you have a lot of folks that are not familiar with the process. I mean, I, I can do it either way. It just, it makes more sense this way, so.
So the other, the other point of, of, the other point that I would like to discuss is that, you know, George, you know, I've been on the board, this is my third term. George, you know, you've been around for a few years. We've never had a solicitor on the planning board, correct me if I'm wrong, um, in recent years, maybe previous years. So what, what has been done before? What, what is the need now? Does the planning board request a solicitor?
Uh, no, so I, I brought this up. Um, what I've been seeing is across the state, I'm seeing more and more planning commissions where municipalities are putting the solicitor on. Um, you know, it, it handles situations like where, for instance, let's say an applicant is looking for a waiver, right? It allows, if you have the solicitor there with them, it allows the solicitor to explain to the planning board the, the, like, the legal mechanism behind the waiver. So like, why you would say, hey, Board of Commissioners, we believe that this person should get a waiver because this is the legal reasoning behind. So, um, this was actually brought up at the planning commission today, uh, their meeting prior to this. Uh, there was, in general, the consensus was that they were interested in having a solicitor there. Um, the idea brought up by Jim Renner, the former board, uh, president, the commission president, was he would have liked to have this at a couple of the cases where they've had to extend and call them back, extend the planning commission to another month because they have the legal advice right there to tell them how, how they, like, what, what they should do. Um, the other thing that was brought up is that, you know, these developers do bring a lawyer to these meetings. So to be able to have the township lawyer there to be able to handle those questions, um, would really help. And the, I mean, the biggest thing is making sure that obviously I, I'm like the minimized risk. So, you know, having someone there that can provide them with the legal opinion so that by the time that plan gets to the Board of Commissioners, we know that it's vetted for that kind of stuff.
All right, thank you.
I'm good.
Uh, I believe Commissioner McAlister's trying to speak, but he's muted.
Ed, you're on mute.
Sorry, sorry about that. I don't know how, but the question I got would be, as of, this was new to us last week. And apparently the chairman of the planning board did not, was unaware of it too last week. Wouldn't it have been nice to talk to the planning board prior to us even voting for anything of this? I mean, none of them were aware of it until it got out last week. Um, I, Pam is the chairperson. I never heard it or even requested a lawyer to be at, a solicitor to be at the table. Uh, as Nicole said, in all the years that I've known Upper Chi, I've never had one. Maybe the planning commission may be changing their laws and stuff to have a solicitor stay on board now, as the zoning board does. But I just think it was unfair that the planning board didn't even know this last week. And, and neither did we until last week. Because my question to Mr. Pierce is, if you're reviewing these already, the circumstances should have been before us, before it came to the hearing or at the meeting. Because if you're reviewing them, if there's an issue, you should have had enough time to get hold of the planning board to answer your question in case that question came up at the hearing. And if, when it came to presented by us from the planning board. Now, if this was a continuation, then, then, hey, we do have an issue. I'm reviewing it. There's a lot of questions not being able to be answered because I was not there or I didn't have enough time to get hold of the planning board. But I, I don't have, I mean, I don't see where this is coming from, but if you're reviewing them.
Commissioner McAlister, with all due respect and candor, it doesn't really make that much difference to me. I'm trying to save the township money. So, you know, the problem is, is that we go to a caucus meeting, there's no questions. We then go to the vote and all of a sudden between the caucus meeting and the actual voting meeting, there's all kinds of questions. What did the planning do? What did they mean by this? How come they were doing? I can't possibly answer that because it's not contained in the review. I review it for the legalities and be able to do it, but until a question comes from this board, I can't, I, I have no idea what you're going to ask or what you're not going to ask. So, you know, for me, then, then we have to postpone the vote from the regular meeting to the next month because I, I, I wasn't prepared for the question because nobody asked me in advance what those issues were or that there were issues. I review them from a legality perspective, a reasonableness of the waivers and how it goes through and to make sure that they have crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Os. You know, you don't want to do it, that's fine. I think it's, it's, it's foolhardy not to do it and it's going to end up costing you more in the long run. But I, whatever you want. I, I mean, I'm just trying to do it in a way that is going to be helpful to you so that we're not delaying all these things to go back and try and get answers and try and understand what they were thinking about. It's, I, I think we're, in all, with all due respect, I think we're making a big to-do about nothing. But that's your call. I don't, I don't really care.
So before we kick the vote, I'd just like to say one thing. Um, I spoke with Barbara Kelly about this. I asked her to speak with the planning board. She informed me that she did speak with the planning board and that the planning board was open to the idea and, and supportive of it. So not unless somebody's telling you something differently, that was, that was, that was, was, that was communicated to me. So I don't think we should make the public appearance of this is something that was never discussed with the planning board. It was. It was discussed with them.
Prior, prior to our caucus meeting? After the caucus meeting, maybe?
It was, I asked them, I asked Ms. Kelly to talk to them to see if they were on board with it. So to say that we didn't talk to them is not really accurate.
Pam never got a phone call with it and she's the chairwoman of the, uh, planning board. You know nothing of it, of it last week.
I can't answer that question because you're telling me she didn't know anything. Ms. Kelly's telling me that she talked to everybody and everybody was okay. So there's a disconnect there.
That's right. After the fact, you mentioned it last week because you also mentioned it at our meeting last week that, uh, Barbara Kelly is also in favor of this or on board of it. That, that comment was made at the. That comment was made at the end of the conversation about it. And I agree with Nicole saying, I mean, our, our main question, do I like how it went down? Absolutely not. The planning board should have been involved with it more. Was there that much of an issue with this planning board or any other planning board? That should have been brought up to the board a long time ago. But I'm sorry, if we, most of the questions don't come until we have a hearing. Most of the recommendations that come to the, from the planning board, we don't have too many hearings or they just come through, we, we, we vote yes and that was a recommendation. Until the people start asking waivers. Well, if we're reviewing them, if there's any questions to the waivers and we had questions, we should have had enough time to answer them, not to continue some. But like Nicole was saying, we're in a pandemic right now and our concern, mine was, is what the cost was going to be again because we don't know what our situation is until we meet. It could be a, a big deficit or a smaller. And I, I, I don't think any additional cost to anybody. And, and then you're going to, if there is an additional cost, it's going to go to the applicant.
Correct.
So there we go again, everything we push, we keep pushing on the applicant. And Upper Chai's already known about how much it costs to get things done. They're not coming in Upper Chai because of the cost.
There was a planning commission meeting earlier and one of the main benefits they saw with this was reducing the amount of time that it takes a plan to get through the process here. They thought that they could reduce significantly amount of time because the solicitor would be there to answer any questions at that planning phase and then be able to provide that continuity over to the board. So, uh, so time is also money for these developers as well as costs. So I, I think if, if our goal is to move people through the process efficiently and this makes sense, if the goal is to move them through cost effectively, then it does not make sense.
So two items were brought up of concern. One is the planning board in favor of it, of it, and two is the cost. Again, it was indicated to me by Ms. Kelly that the planning board is in favor of it. And Mr. Pierce has indicated tonight that the additional cost is not going to be there. So let's give it a try. And if it doesn't work out, we can move in a different direction. So all I'm asking is for us to try it. Developers bring their solicitors to the planning board meetings every single time. I think it's wise for us to have a solicitor on, on behalf of the township. So with that said, Mr. Needles, please take a roll call vote. Yes, you're in favor, no, you're not in favor.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes, if it's a trial period.
If you want to amend the motion.
I'm good, my questions were answered, I'm good.
Nicole.
You cut out, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's your turn to vote.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Rickowski?
No.
And Commissioner Neary?
Yes.
Our motion passes four one.
Thank you.
The next thing up is a motion approving the trash refund list two thousand twenty dash five at the amount of three hundred and ninety dollars. So moved.
Motion in a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is carried.
Uh, the last motion is a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of six hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirteen cents. So moved.
Second the motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is carried. Thank you. Commissioner Neary and Commissioner Whitaker, thank you for reading through the resolutions. I appreciate it, as does the rest of the board. Uh, with that said, we are on to our new business. Mr. Needles, I believe we might have some new business, so if you can address that, I would appreciate it.
Sure, so as you know, we had two meetings earlier today. We had the recreation meeting and the planning commission meeting. Um, the rec board meeting, uh, the rec board, as you know, is tasked with providing the, uh, setting the, the operating guidelines for the township's parks and rec facilities. And at their meeting tonight, they adopted the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society's reopening guidelines uh, based on process to reopen Pennsylvania for recreation and parks facilities. Um, so we will be issuing out those guidelines and following those guidelines as they plan to reopen uh, based off of the phase that we are in.
Uh, Mrs. Whitaker, I noticed your, um, committee, I don't know if you would like to address anything or have any additional comments?
That was going to be a part of my comments. I did speak with, um, okay, did speak with Brian earlier this evening after their meeting to see what the feeling was or the feedback was from the board regarding the PA guidelines, so thank you.
George, the, the PA guidelines and the reds are, is there a difference or does that supersede the guidelines or what? You know how they have the red, yellow and green?
Yeah, so in the red phase, uh, they talk about, most things are closed and they do have some guidance in here for farmers markets, trails, golf. And that's about it right now. So essentially, everything will continue to be enclosed as we're in red.
Yeah, most of the parks are closed in the red and yellow phase. The only thing that really changes in the yellow phase is the possibility of having parks open with recommendations, uh, with guidelines that they have to file. They can only be in small groups. Um, so that, that will be available in the yellow and the green phase is having parks, summer camp, excuse me, summer camps um, in small groups. So that was a part of the, that was the attachment that I sent out to the board um, earlier this week when I had, um, sent the information regarding the skate park. So that was, that document was attached and you can open it and review it.
So is there any additional comments?
Under new business, no.
Okay, all right. I mean, me personally, you know, I can't wait till this COVID nineteen crisis is over. Um, you know, I, I, I believe it's time to reopen our economy and get back to work. Um, and I, I don't have a problem with people walking around our parks, trying to get some fresh air. Um, you know, spending some time, spending some quality time with their children outside. So when it comes to those, when it comes to those situations like that, uh, uh, I'm, I'm very, I'm fully supportive of, you know, our, our residents trying to get out and get, and get some fresh air. I can understand why a skate park might want to be closed because of the, of the fence being up and combined space. But if, um, this is what the board recommends, do we need, do, do we need to vote on this to accept the guidelines? Or is this just something that we're just talking about tonight?
Uh, I think the guidelines are set by the governor.
Yeah, the guidelines, so those guidelines are set by the governor and then you've delegated the authority to the rec board to set the policies and procedures for the recreation facilities.
Right.
All right. Um, I believe there's no other new, I believe there's no, no, there's no other new businesses, business, excuse me. With that said, Mr. Needles, or I can just go by one by one to each commissioner to see if they have any additional comments. And then if not, we can, um, close our meetings. I'll start with Commissioner DeBaca.
Okay, um, the, uh, highway and sanitation, um, Monday being a holiday, they're going to come in full force Tuesday and do both trash collections Mondays and Tuesdays. Um, they're kind of setting up a, a schedule where we can get them all back in full force under, under the guidelines still, but, you know, we got a lot of grass to get cut and we're trying to get them back in motion. I just wanted to see if, uh, I know, uh, I sent you guys all an email up at the so-called goat farm. Uh, Mr. Conrad may have a change in what he wants to do up there. With this pandemic, he's in fear of putting a restaurant up there and he has a, another plan he'd like to just get our input, let us look at. See if he, you know, we'd like him to take it further or not. It's, it's all in the beginning stages. I would just like to find a way to, you know, notify the residents that are not backdoored with nothing. And like I said, it's beginning stages, nothing crazy. Still, we're, still we're in water, I just want to comment, I'm sure everybody's seen the news with, you know, with what county council did with Del Cor and all. I mean, what happened in the news is all I know unless someone else knows any different, you know.
All right, if, if that's all, Mr. Commissioner Baca, we'll move on to Commissioner Whitaker.
No, you mentioned the, um, what did you say before the sewer authority? What were you, oh, you were talking about Conrad?
Yes.
Okay, so I thought, I didn't know that it was a restaurant. I thought it was a mini golf course that he was.
It was a combination. It was, it was a golf with, with a, a restaurant. They go hand in hand.
Okay.
Similar to a top golf facility.
Yeah, it's, that's, yeah.
It was like the driving range, right, where you practice?
Well, it's a little, it's a little more, it's more, you know, it's, um,
More upscale.
Like a video game, you hit a golf ball and it follows your ball. You know, it's, it was a little more intense than a golf range, just a driving range.
Okay, well, he doesn't want to do that at all.
Well, he's a, uh, uh, he don't want to do, nothing to do with the restaurant or food or something like, you know, someplace like that to gather. Not right now. That's why he, he showed that other plan to see if we're, would consider or look at it. You know, he just wants our input right now.
So the, the, the only thing that I would, um, bring up to the board is there was a plan approved for that project, I believe.
Yes.
So if he wants to move in a different, different direction, he would have to go through a whole new approval process for the, for the, uh, for the new, um, proposal.
Yes, yeah, for sure. But, but, but this does fit the zoning, I know that. What is proposing?
My only comment about the sketch plan was, I, I think it might not be a bad idea to have maybe a rate turn in and a rate turn out on the three twenty-two to cut down on the, uh, truck traffic crossing over Tactister Avenue if it was ever to take place. That was my only, that was my only, um, comment that I thought of.
I think it's just even see if we would even consider this type of plan. So take a look, get your comments to me and I'll pass them on or, you know, go for merits. It's just informational right now.
Okay. Commissioner Rickowski?
Uh, thank you. Um, not much on the plate here, the medics report, I'll put in everybody's file, uh, just to give you a heads up. The first quarter was six hundred and forty-four, uh, responses that they went to. Uh, the fire department's numbers are low, I'm trying to get that report from the fire marshal to get a quarterly, quarterly report for him unless we have any major issues. Uh, East Elm's Manor stuff, I don't know how we're going to do it, Lisa, I, I, I like all the ideas. I, I sent it in an email about the, uh, what Alex brought or sent to us and stuff like that. And, uh, or Albert, my fault, which one is it? But are we putting that in the road program also, just to get the costs in there, Lisa, do you know?
I do know, um, yes, it is in the road program. We put it in as an alternate, as I discussed last week. So we didn't, um, have any issue delaying the contract any further. Um, right now, we're showing an alternate for two raised intersections and a speed home, which is what Al Federico, our traffic consultant, had suggested. Um, if we do less than that, which is what, um, was suggested by you commissioner, uh, we'll still have the numbers.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had it. George, then we got to figure out the magic, I mean, we're all virtual now. Is it possible to get a meeting in the development prior, just half and half? Or just to give them our, what we found out, our projections and get, and present it to them, or do we just wait?
George, you're on mute.
I did that on purpose. So the road program would probably be, uh, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be, that would come in for the June meeting. There might, there might be a possibility that we could be at a point before, definitely be at a point before construction where we can bring people in and have a, uh, have a meeting. The other option is we could do a digital town hall meeting, we could send them all a letter um, with a call in and, and hold something and provide them the information.
Okay, thanks. We'll play it by, I guess, after June, what, June fourth, we'll all know what's going on after that, so, okay. All right, um, other than that, I think that's it, I'm good.
Commissioner Neary? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. The only things I wanted to mention, um, first, I, I, I will take the library appointment. If Nicole, if you want to tell them, then I'll take that. I'd like to urge, it's not that funny. I'd like to urge everybody, if at all possible, if you're listening, to, to please go to votespa.com and vote by mail. The deadline is, uh, May twenty-sixth, which is next Tuesday. I can tell you that in the fourth ward right now, we're in dire straits with our, with our election boards. Neither of the election boards are going to be working, they are all senior citizens and they're all uh, concerned about possible exposure. So, um, also putting a plea out there, if you are interested in working inside, there, there will be protective gear from my understanding. Uh, you'd have to be there about six thirty in the morning and work until about eight fifteen, eight thirty that night. Um, they pay to a hundred and forty dollars, which is about ten dollars an hour, which is a lot more than they were paying. Um, so if, in, in either case, if you have any questions, please contact me. But I, I really urge everybody to vote by mail. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Um, can I go?
I thought you would.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, so I have a few things. Um, George already touched on the recreation. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, to follow up on that, we'll know more, um, next month regarding summer camp and if, um, we will have summer camp. One of the questions that came up was, in the event that one of the counselors or one of the kids, um, were to get sick, what do we do? Do we shut down the entire camp? Do we just shut down that group that the child was in? So there are a lot of questions that, um, came up in the rec, in the rec meeting that, uh, we need to, um, they do and we need to consider. Um, the library, the letter to the Kingsman Road area residents, my understanding is that'll go out early next week. Right, okay. Um, Hart and Cole will move into phase three of their training next month. Um, they are still requesting that the survey be filled out. How many of you completed the survey? Raise your hand if you completed the survey, we're Upper Chai Chester residents. I can't joke, Mike, did you complete the survey?
No, I believe I did.
All right, make sure that you complete the survey. Your spouse completes the survey, your children, anyone that lives in Upper Chai Chester completes the survey. Right now, they've only had a hundred and thirty-nine, uh, completed surveys, the goal is three hundred. We should be able to push that, so we want you to ask that you push it on yours. The, the link is on Upper Chai Chester, um, or upperchai.org's website. Copy the link down, once you open it up, copy and paste it into your, onto your Facebook page and ask residents to complete the survey so that we can meet the three hundred person goal, okay? Additionally, the Limwood Heights redevelopment, um, plan. I received a copy of the packet from, um, Barb, did everyone else receive a copy yet? Did everyone else get a copy of that plan? It's, it's awesome, so, okay, I'll send it out, it looks really good. I didn't read it necessarily, I'm just kind of flip through it, but it looks really good, so we will make sure that goes. But it looks really good. So we will make sure that goes out to everyone so he can review it. Um, PennDOT, what's the status with the PennDOT roundabout? Any, right before we had the PennDOT roundabout, we had the township and then we went into lockdown.
Uh, so they contacted us probably about three weeks after everything kind of, um, happened and stated that they wouldn't be able to send anybody out to do the traffic counts at this point. So once everything is lifted, they'll go back and do the traffic counts because that was one of the things that they said they would come back to us with.
Okay, great. Um, while you're still on mute, the culling contract, what is the status of the culling RFP?
So I have a, a good final draft of the RFP. I'm going to send it over to Mike Pierce for review to put his final blessing on and that should be go out. You guys should be able to get it out so you can act in June, uh, or if you so choose in July.
And the Penn and Cole, currently they are still using longos. They're not using, um, Tojo.
Okay. And the sewer authority, are we still doing a RFP for the sewer authority? Or a, a RFP to find out the cost or get in and out?
Yeah, so is that something the board wants to talk about now? Or I, I thought that was going to be something that would be reviewed at the June meeting and decide if you wanted to proceed forward.
That's, that's what I thought too.
June? Okay, okay. All right, that's fine. Um, the Rogers, George, you sent out an email to myself and, um, the solicitor, our solicitor regarding Rogers versus Rogers with the D Avenue. And what my response was that I think we should keep the legal name that's currently filed rather than trying to change it. What are we doing so that I can get back to the residents and on that street as far as what their address is going to be? What are the next steps?
Yeah, so, uh, one of two ways to do this, I just want to circle back to that. The legal name is, uh, Rogers with a D.
Okay.
For all of their parcels out at the county are Rogers with no D. So the least impactful would be how do we change the legal name of the road to Rogers?
Okay.
I don't know what that process is to change it to Rogers. But if you change every, if we were going to go back to the Rogers with a D, we would have to notify all those, uh, we would have to notify the county and all of the, the, the postmaster to change it back. I don't know how much headache that's going to cause for people.
Okay, so right now everything is Rogers without the D and it will be easier to change the legal name is what you're saying?
I don't know. I don't know what the process is.
So we need Mr. Pierce.
It would be simpler. It would not necessarily be easier.
Yes.
Yes, simple, right, correct. Less complicated.
I think you would have to, correct me if I'm wrong, but we adopt the road as a new name, I think.
I, I believe that that would be, that would be done, yes.
Okay, so can we keep that moving? Let's keep that, okay. Um, and then the rain garden at Primetime Limo, what is the status of that? I received a letter from Commissioner Farrow, excuse me, former Commissioner Farrow regarding, um, this, that this has been going on since May of 2019 and what are the next steps? What, why isn't this, well, we know why it's been stopped now, right? For the last couple of months, but what are you worrying about?
Well, I spoke to, I spoke to Keith about it because I received the same letter from, uh, Commissioner, former Commissioner Farrow. Um, and Keith went over, okay, and Keith went over to talk to, um, the people at Primetime. First, the first thing was, uh, Hootman was not doing the work, uh, because his office was partially closed due to, to the COVID thing. So it's supposed to be underway again. Uh, that was about two weeks ago, I think. Lisa, was there anything you wanted to add?
Um, actually, let me, let me explain what has happened. Um, when the complaint came out, because the complaint came to, to the LNI office. Um, it was afterwards that Keith had, had me, asked me to take a look at it. We did find in record, actually Keith went into the archives and found a record, um, when, while I was not here, that's why we didn't have it in our office. There was an extension to the driveway at Prime Limo. Um, that extension was to be for a stone parking area. Somehow or another, not only did the stone parking area get paved, but the, some of the plantings in the rain garden had died and they filled in the rain garden. So not only was that area getting additional water because it was paved, but as well, there was no stormwater VMP. Um, Keith went and spoke to Primetime, um, actually to Mr. Mayor who, who owns the property. And Mr. Mayor agreed that he would renew the, the rain garden. However, he needs to renew the rain garden for the additional pervious because it was only done for the stone base. So it has to be re-engineered to increase the size of that to take the additional water. And I don't know where that is in the process.
Well, first of all, I'm glad we brought that up because I'm, I'm going to set the record straight. Second of all.
One sec, can I say one thing? Does he know that he needs to extend it, make the rain garden larger because of that?
That I can't tell you. That would be something that, um, we'd have to follow up with Keith. But that's, that was my recommendation to Keith.
Okay.
So I know that Keith had sent an email saying that he had spoken to both Mr. Mayor and to Mr. Farrow. Um, but I don't know what he relayed to them.
You good, Nicole? Okay. Yes, let me give everybody some history. First of all, it's amazing how I'm the commissioner and I had award and I never got a letter from Mr. Farrow. Second of all, half the story is correct, half of it's not correct. I was involved with this. I don't care if you like it or not, Lisa. That rain garden was sized for that drive, that park lot when it was to be paved. Matt Hootman, who is our alternate, uh, engineer today, was the same one that drew up the plan for the rain garden. Nobody took the rain garden out. That, and my, I had a conversation with Matt Hootman. And Matt Hootman, which I confirmed was that the rain garden, because that was my question. When I, I went there to help Primetime Limo in 2012, because they were extending their driveway for the extra long limo they had to bring in. They were going to stern it for a while. Later on down the road, when it got cooler, they were going to pave it. So Matt Hootman, to my understanding, sized that rain garden just for that area, which is 65 by 13. That's all it was. Now, you're absolutely correct. That rain garden never worked correctly. So what happened was the plants died. The only thing that was taken out of that rain garden, because I talked to the guy that did it, were the plants that died and the mulch that always floated around and did not allow that place for the water to go down. So my last question to Mr. Hootman was, does that place, did that place ever perk? He said, no. So no matter what rain garden. So it seems awful funny how Mr. Farrow has never communicated. Keith and I met out there back in March when it was freezing cold and gave him the game plan that Hootman and BJ, which is the owner of Primetime, Mr. Farrow put bums up against his building to keep the water away. There's always been a low spot next to, next to his building. Mr. Farrow directed his water onto the sidewalk and onto their property. So that's even his puddle over there. So I don't know where everybody's getting it, that the rain garden was not sized, was not put in, it was taken out. It was never taken out.
All right, let me, let me answer what I know. I have a copy of a plan that was approved by Panoni Associates that was solely a stone parking area. We did not find anything with a paved surface and there was a rain garden. There is a letter that approves that particular plan and those calculations. As for the letter that was sent, Mr. Farrow did copy me on the letter. And then when I did a review and said that his, his roof drains were draining onto that group's property and onto the sidewalk, I got a very, very, um, demonstrative letter from, from Mr. Farrow telling me that I didn't know what I was doing. So I, I, the insinuation that something was going on behind your back is absolutely isn't true.
I didn't say nothing was going to be behind our backs.
You said you didn't get a copy of anything and I'm wrong.
But here's the thing, to, to put the board on notice right now, Keith has been on this from day one. And BJ has now, a, a matter of fact, I went by there. They're doing landscaping to get the bullion inside over to it and take the water back over to the rain garden. That rain garden is never going to work if it doesn't perk. And he agreed to put the plant they took back out, back in. So I don't know what the issue is here. Yeah, uh, Primetime didn't do it in March. It was freezing cold. We've had rain every other day since, since the winter time. We go into COVID, nobody's doing anything. And it was supposed to start it and next thing you know, it's Memorial Day. There ain't going to be anybody working over the weekend. That's my understanding. The landscaping is getting done and apparently there was a plan coming to the town from Matt Hootman, Matt Hootman, stating what they were going to do as landscaping to get the water, to try to direct the water back over to the rain garden, which is not going to work properly when you don't perk anyway.
And you are correct in that, Mr. Rakowski. If, if it doesn't perk, then, then that rain garden isn't going to work. However, if there's not the amended soils where there was never a perk test taken, then it will, then we don't know what needs to be done.
Well, I did ask a question in the back.
All I can tell you is that, that I, the information that I have, that Keith had found in the archives, it was a stone paved area, a stone, stone area. And it was an extension with a rain garden that was approved. So, you know, so when I look at it, I don't see any rain garden. Nor do I see that, that it's a stone area. It's been paved. And that's where we are. So if it needs to be re-engineered, that it works properly, then, then that's going to have to be done. And I think what Keith was trying to do is to get both of them together because it's a joint project, both properties.
It's not both properties because Mr. Farrow's property is on the property line. That's the problem. So all the water from his buildings goes into his property anyway. So, because there's two lots there.
And that's, so I like to, I just, I, I think, I think we discussed it long, long enough. The only thing I just want to, it just interject is to our solicitor with the beer. One, does it become a point where this is not a township issue and an issue between two, between two owners?
It is currently an issue between two owners. Any water runoff issues are private issues. However, if there was a parking lot that's been paved without proper permitting, when it was supposed to be a stone parking lot, then the township may have to go forward and enforce the permitting that was given for the stone. Now, I don't know what the history was or wasn't related to the paving versus the stone, but I think, uh, my learned colleague engineer will tell you that a stone parking lot is a lot more pervious than a paved parking lot. So, you know, that's going to be an issue, you know, as far as I can see. If that parking lot was paved without permitting and without permission and without relation to storm water management, there may have to be an enforcement action, uh, that would be taken. But I don't know enough about the history to say one definitively, uh, that, that it exists that way or not.
And, and, and as I stated before, in 2012, the initial was get it stern so he can move his limos over later in the spring to get it paved. That was to talk between myself, BJ and Panonis Engineering. And at that time, Matt Hootman was engineer still for BJ. And I asked him the other day, still a couple of weeks ago, and, and he was on the same page as what we stated in 2012, that the rain garden was sized for whether they're going to pave it or not. And that's the answer I got from him.
But, but I guess the, the ancillary question is, or the ancillary problem is, apparently it was paved without a proper approval and a permit.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we just? I don't know if it was proper improvement because.
I just think we debated this long enough for tonight. Ed, if you, maybe me, you and George could sit down on a Friday and try to hash things out to see, to see, to see which way to go. Um, I just, I just like, I just like to, uh, move on.
I'll reach out to Matt more morning and see if he has a different plan than what we had here at the township.
And, and obviously if something you need me to look at, I'll take a look at it.
Okay, so I have a couple, uh, two more things. Um, the 2020 census has been extended until October 31st, 2020. Last week I given the incorrect date. So October 31st, 2020, that is for, uh, self-reporting. So the online, the phone or, um, any type of self-reporting, um, processes will be through October 31st. And then, um, to follow up on Commissioner Neary's, um, mail-in ballots. I was on county council's, um, meeting last night and a couple of things, um, that took place. The board approved, um, two, two additional, um, items. One will be a mobile, a mobile van that will go around through the senior citizen living, assisted living facilities, um, to pick up ballots that residents were not able to mail back in on time. Because apparently there's a backlog. There's a, as of May 20th, the county had approved approximately 50,000 absentee for mail-in ballots and approximately 30,000 of those were approved to be mailed out. Anyone that applied for a mail-in ballot prior to May 14th, those mail-in ballots were mailed out today. Approximately 25,000, um, applicants are still pending. So it's very likely that individuals will not receive their ballots, will not be, will receive them late. In which case you can go and vote in person, but you can only vote on a provisional ballot if your name appears on the roster as having applied for, um, a mail-in ballot. You can only vote provisionally, but still obviously go and vote. There are going to be drop boxes at the polling places for individuals that weren't able to mail them in by June 2nd. So you can walk up and put your ballot into the drop box at the voting facilities or, you know, the voting places. Um, and then if you want to go in and vote, then you can vote provisionally as well. So, um, at this point, I would say you can vote either way, um, by mail, in person, and, um, also drop your ballot into, uh, into, into the mailbox.
Thank you.
All right, that's all.
Thank you for the, uh, information. Uh, I'd like to just move on to my report. Uh, fifth, uh, fifth ward polling places, uh, Luther Knowles, as we indicated last week, was moved to Reliance. So everybody, if fifth ward second precinct, you would need to go to Luther, uh, to Reliance to, um, cast your vote if you're interested in, uh, voting at, at the polls. Uh, I'm facing the same problem as Commissioner Neary is with poll workers. Um, again, as Commissioner Neary indicated, if you're interested in volunteering in the fifth ward, please reach out to me. I, I would be happy to, uh, hear from you. Um, we're trying to get, uh, assistance from the county, hopefully, um, regarding the situation. Or I should say that we're, we're going to, we're going to report to the county, uh, whether or not we have the, the adequate numbers to run, uh, our, uh, polling place. Uh, Autozone, uh, I mentioned it last week in my report, uh, we do have the plan. The county engineering is reviewing it. So once, once that's done, we will move forward with it. Um, we did receive a plan. Um, we did receive a plan for 800 Galbraith Avenue for a, for a subdivision. Um, so that's also, that is also in the process. Um, since, since we have the stay-at-home order, um, right now, the timeline for any new applications um, begins after the stay-at-home order is lifted. There is an Act 15 I wanna talk to Ms. Kelly about, um, which allows us to do reviews. So I just wanna make sure that we are following that process correctly. Um, and to assure that anything that it submitted, that um, that the paperwork is uh, being handled in the right manner due to the COVID-19 crisis. Really don't have anything else to report on, not unless anybody has any questions for me. Uh, I don't know if our township manager has anything to, 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 to speak on or, or, or to professionals. So George, I'll start with you. Um, I think I'd like to talk about maybe under your report is how we are planning on, on meeting uh, in June for our Board of Commissioner meetings inside of the gymnasium along with the zoning board and the hearing board. Um, the zoning in July and the zoning board in uh, uh, planning board in June, zoning board in July. So if you could touch on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. Over the next uh, two weeks, we'll be setting up the gymnasium, allow for meetings with significant social distancing. Uh, basically what I'll do is I'll get it set up and I'll notify everyone and you can come in and find any kind of feedback. That's about it. We'll practice social distancing, we'll wear masks. Um, I do believe that we should be televising and recording the meetings, uh, as obviously people will not be interested in coming out uh, in person. And I'm working, uh, Andrew Henderson, who works here, has been working on the technology to get that all up and running.
Alright, so just, just to me, just so everybody understands that we're, we're planning on moving from our virtual meetings and actually meeting in person with, you know, practicing our safety due, due, due to the COVID. Alright, Mrs. Catania, do you have anything that you'd like to report on?
I, I do have two things that George asked me to, to talk to you about. One is that we have received word from Traffic Planning and Design concerning improvements to the Blue Ball Avenue Bridge. That's, that's deck repair. If you recall, Chester Water Authority did some work a couple of years ago on that bridge and provided a, a detour. They wanna use the same detour, PennDOT wants to use the same detour for a project that's going to be done at the end of the school year and should be completed prior to the school year in the summer of 2020. So they're asking um, for any comments that we would have concerning that route. Um, if you recall, if you're coming, what would be north? You would come on Ridge Road up to uh, 420. And then turn on to Meeting House Road and then obviously the opposite way you were going south. Um, to avoid the Blue Ball Avenue Bridge. The only thing that, that I think that we need to take a look at is what the schedule is going to be for the Wawa Project. Because we'll be having improvements along the Wawa Project potentially at the same time. So we'll have to take a look at that prior to making any comments back.
Is that project in 2021, 2022?
2021, yes. Yes. Um, the other thing is, I spoke to Al Tommaselli about the traffic signals uh, on 322. And as part of that conversation, uh, we discussed the naming of the streets. I think everyone has a copy of an email that Barb sent out, um, saying that, that Bethel Township has named their connector road, their commercial road, which actually connects into the intersection of, of Creek Parkway as East Branch Road. Um, I asked the question of Al whether it was important or how important it was that we act on anything now. There was some discussion at the board level that you may wanna wait until such time as they're going to do the construction so that that board would make those decisions. Um, these projects are extremely large design packages. There are over a thousand sheets. And what he explained to me was that he would rather get the, the names in now. Um, so that at any point in time, as they start gathering more of these sheets, they're putting the correct information on that sheet. Um, it makes sense to me, if you've ever done a very large design job, it, it's very difficult to make sure if you're going to make a name change that it gets, gets everywhere that it needs to go. Um, I'm only bringing it up because it is something that the board would have to decide. I know George sent an email out with some suggestions, along with some suggestions that, that you had made. Um, but he'd like to get a decision maybe within the next month, if that's possible. So um, just to follow up, Autozone actually was received, a complete package was received on May the 5th. And yesterday, we presented our review of the, of the Autozone. So the Autozone project has been reviewed. Um, we're waiting some, some uh, resolution of some items. Uh, but we do have a, a review completed for 800 Galbraith as well. Um, I believe that's all I have. We mentioned that our, our road program is out to bid currently. It's on Penn Bid, so it's being done um, electronically. I can tell you that we've been getting some really good numbers as low as, as like $69 a ton for material. So we should see some pretty favorable bids when, when they do come in. I don't recall, we had talked about doing it June the 3rd, which would be the day before your workshop. But we definitely will have all the information um, for the, for the meeting on the 4th. That's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you.
I don't have any action items. We've just continued to monitor a number of the items that have been coming before the board. Uh, we've dealt with a couple of personnel issues and all legal matters are basically in order as well as they can be during these fun times.
Alright, thank you. Alright, um, it's, I'm not too sure if the board has any um, resolution on the names of the streets. Um, I had sent out an email with a couple of them. Um, so I don't know whether or not the board is applicable to all of those names. So I, I think for right now, maybe we just hold off, not, not unless the board has any strong feelings of naming them at this current time. So I name them, I, I would name one Trump Lane, but I don't think that would go over well, so. Anyway.
Mike, uh, can I just note this real quick? Um, one of those roads is currently named Bethel and does have homes with addresses on it. So if there is a change to the name of that road, uh, that would affect those properties, just like you spoke about Rogers and Rodgers. Um, and then uh, the other one is replacing what used to be Garfield. So I, I don't know if that, you know, just taking that into consideration.
Right.
And just as a note, we did put comments, a public comment on the agenda a second time, just for uh, for doing it virtually.
Say it again?
We have a, a public comment section at the end of the meeting since we were doing it virtually. So after we're done that things, we'll just need to do that real quick.
Okay, so let's, uh, I, I think, I think we all had a fair share of talking tonight. So um, let's move on to that public comment portion.
Uh, so there's some people on the call right now. If anybody would like to partake in the public comment, you can do so by pressing star six on your phone. That will unmute your line, uh, state your name, your address, and you can speak for uh, two minutes. Thank you.
Anything, George?
Pierce, we're good.
Alright, um, just like to thank the board for um, another virtual meeting. Um, I love you all, be praying for everybody and hopefully this will end soon and um, have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Thank you.
All favor.
Aye.
Alright.
Goodnight, everybody.
Alright, thank you.
Goodnight, thanks.
Thank you.
George. George. George, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you get my text message?
Yeah.
You don't even need to call me.
Huh, no, no. I was just talking about the broadcast, it kept freezing up.
Yeah.
I got a couple of messages that it kept freezing up, so.
We're gonna, we're gonna upload this right now, so.
Okay.
Alright, goodnight.
Apparently the recording comes out really good, uh, Nicole.
Okay, well, that's good because last week, I think they got cut off at the end. And then, then tonight it probes up, so hopefully people will go back and watch it.
Alright.
Okay.
Goodnight, everybody.
Thank you for reading. I'll see you guys later.
Alright.
Bye bye.